Good evening, everyone. I see the time is five thirty-two, Monday evening. I'd like to call this public hearing on Monday, November fourth, to order and acknowledge that we're on the traditional territory of this townhouse. This public hearing is being convened in accordance with the Local Government Act in order to hear public comments on the village of Harrison Hot Springs zoning amendment bylaw number one-two-zero-nine, twenty-twenty-four. The sites that are subject of this bylaw have civic addresses of two-sixty and two-seventy Esplanade Avenue. In accordance with the legislation and the village's public notice bylaw number one-two-zero-zero, twenty-twenty-four, the time, place, and details of this public hearing and the proposed bylaw were advertised on October twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-four via direct mail out and on the village's website and public notice posting boards. An information package on the proposed bylaw has been available on the village's website and at the village office since that time. All persons who believe that their interest in property is affected by the proposed bylaw must be afforded a reasonable opportunity to be heard or to present written submissions respecting matters contained in the bylaw that is the subject of this hearing. Therefore, any person attending who believes their interest in property is affected by the proposed bylaw may be heard on the matters contained in the bylaw. Please restrict your remarks to matters of direct consequence to the proposed bylaw. This hearing is not a forum in which elected officials debate amongst themselves or with proponents or opponents. Council may ask questions for clarification of a speaker's point. Public hearings are subject to the rules of natural justice and procedural fairness. Therefore, to ensure the applicant is given a fair hearing, council must enter into this hearing with an open mind amenable to persuasion. After this public hearing is has concluded, the council may without further notice give whatever effect they believe appropriate to the representations made at this hearing. The bylaw will be presented to council for further consideration at the next appropriate council meeting. Our planning consultant will now introduce zoning amendment bylaw number one-two-zero-nine, twenty-twenty-four as read a second time at the regular council meeting of September ninth, twenty-twenty-four. Mr. Cossey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Excuse me. Whereas the mayor and council is deemed it advisable to amend the village of Har- of Harrison Hot Springs zoning bylaw number one-one-one-five, twenty-seventeen, the zoning bylaw for the village of Harrison Hot Springs has adopted May seven, two thousand and eighteen. Now, therefore, an open meeting assembled, the mayor and council for the village of Harrison Hot Springs enacts as follows. Citation: This bylaw may be cited for all purposes as the village of Harrison Hot Springs zoning amendment bylaw number one-one-two-zero-nine, twenty-twenty-four. Number, point number two, text amendment, that A, under the C-one zone department development regulations for the commercial uses, the following number twelve is inserted in the notes section. Item B, under the notes section, the following is inserted. Point number twelve, for land legally described as parcel B four-one-two-six-seven-five-E except part subdivided by plan six-three-six-six-zero of lot two, block twelve, section thirteen township four, range twenty-nine west of the Sixth Meridian, New Westminster District Plan two-five-one, parcel identification number zero-zero-four-six-four-five-one-six-two and parcel A lot three, block two, section thirteen township four, range twenty-nine west of the Sixth Meridian, New Westminster District Plan two-five-one, parcel identification number zero-one-one-five-three-five-one-zero-five. The maximum allowable floor area ratio must not exceed one-point-six-two. The lock coverage must not exceed ninety-five percent and the maximum height must not exceed twenty meters. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Cossey. The developer is now invited to make a presentation regarding the zoning amendment bylaw. So how how long will it take? Any minute, we will just pause and hopefully they'll be here in the next minute.
Your worship, we're just gonna pause the recording for a moment until the consultant comes in.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, this is Rajinder, Architect Rajinder from Flat Architecture. I really apologize for getting delayed. It's a I don't know where was Google taking me on through. Took me two hours to come here. Sorry for that. Thanks for giving us the opportunity to present this project. I'm just gonna go through a little bit more brief about the data and what we are trying to achieve over here. You can see on the screen, this is overall what the project size is. The total site area, which are two properties, are approximately twenty-two thousand eight hundred square foot. The allowed FSR as per the OCP is one-point-five and we are proposing one-point-six-two, only one-point-one-two FSR more than that. The overall design and the project proposal is about the hotel building. It's a it's a total six-story hotel building and we'll go through the project, the about the details about it. The total height of the project which we are proposing is twenty meter and we are asking for the variance in that. One of the thing which on this project, what we are trying to do is parking. One of the issue we know that it's always is the parking is always an issue. What we are trying to achieve is there are total of seventy-one rooms being proposed as a hotel development with a multipurpose and a restaurant with thirty-three seats at the great, at the third level and we'll just go through it. As per the zoning bylaw requirement, there are eighty-two seat stalls required, but we are going over with being proposed at one-hundred-twelve stalls. We are still working with, there are some comments we got back last week. I think we are still working with Moti. They may go a little bit down, but we are still going to be over than the what's required for the zoning bylaw. This is a site plan where the the location of the project, it's a, it's between Esplanade and Lillowet Street. So the main entrance to the hotel, which is a pedestrian entrance, is going to be from Esplanade. You can see and and the parking entrance is going from the rear from the Lillowet Ride. And then we have a ramp going up, two level of parking on the back side and the front we have at the grade level, it's all amenities for the hotel. This is regarding a little bit of about the format character, how we came along with it. One of the requirements for the OCP is about the going with the existing development and the taking the element so that the context and the relation is going to be kind of a similar to what we have existing in the neighborhood and keeping that in the the village look. So at the grade level, we have a lot of glazing. We intentionally did not try to put any walls or any rooms around this side so that we can keep it open from the pedestrian circulation point of view along the north side. And on the second and third floor, you can see we have restaurant as well as mezzanine, which we will go through the plan. And on the top two floors, there are rooms which have a view to the lakeside. Okay, sorry. Yeah, okay. So we have done a basic massing model with respect to how the building form is going to be. Also, the shadow study, which was requested by the city, but also provide more information. The building is going to be north facing from the from the Esplanade side and the south on the backside. And you can see how the shadows are affecting, which is going to be on the on the north side. And these are few other views how the building massing is going to be. We intentionally tried to put the massing, the hotel in the middle of it and we shall go through the plans a little bit more in detail. So these are overall site plan showing the shadow effects with the three studies. One is twenty-first March Equinox and then the September and June and December. I'm just gonna go through a little bit more detail about the plans. So we have main entrance again, as I mentioned earlier, is from the Esplanade hotel with the cafe and the washrooms and a small pool being suggested right now in the hotel at the gray level, parking on the rear side with the garbage as well as the two PMTs for electrical requirements for the building. And then on the second floor, we have multi-restaurant with a kitchen shown in there, which it will be, we intentionally pushed the the ground floor, the the main level is actually kind of created in such a way that the facade is in line with Esplanade, but the second and third and upper levels, we pulled it back intentionally to create a relief towards the Esplanade rather than the building is facing right on the top of it. And you can see there is a overhang deck of approximately ten feet shown towards the Esplanade, so people can sit outside on the sunny days. The same goes for the multipurpose room. If there's a meetings or or some guests coming in, they can enjoy that view as well as they can have their meetings in there. On the rear side, we have rooms shown which have, but on, we intentionally put the wish rooms in the middle of it so that we can get more light and air from the both sides of the building, also creating a nice view on the Lillowet Street side, Lillowet Avenue side. And then level four, five, and six, we have, we have rooms on two floors, so there are total of seventy-one floors. On the rooftop, a private amenity, outdoor amenity is being proposed, which will be have a barbecue and 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 they can enjoy the view. So these are the few elevations what we have been proposing. There will be vertical siding, there's a brick on the ground floor as well as the cedar looking finish, which will be longevity, we are not using the, it's going to be the metal finish we will be using. On the sides, because it the pro, some of the property in the parking is going to be on the property line, so to meet the court, they need to meet the rated wall, but you can see in the middle, the the finishes are going to be matching the rest of the building. On the backside, even though park it is visible from the Lillowet Avenue side, we are working with the city and and we are looking into how to cover that. We don't want to do the concrete wall because it's just going to create a little more rigid form on the backside, but we are going to be proposing a mesh metal is called architectural finish and it's architecture screens which can come in a different color, so we will be using bronze color finish for that to match our cedar finish. We have also added more material on the backside where the entrance to the to the main complexes. It's a typical section, even though we are calling it six-story. Technically, the six-story is only from the parking side from the facade. It's actually only five-story, you can clearly see it. So main level, restaurant, mezzanine, and two hotel units up there. These are some landscape drawings, just showing the outdoor amenity on the rooftop, how the sitting is being proposed and what's being proposed and greenery being proposed on all three sides, actually all four sides other than the roof in the middle. There will be benches which are going to be part of the development along the Esplanade Avenue and their same image is what kind of finishes being proposed on this project. Again, this is level three when the parking level is reduced back to the rooms, so you will have a bigger patio on the side. They are not going to be accessible other than the maintenance purpose only, but they will be green on the edges, will be green shrubs being provided. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. The village has received a number of written submissions. Scott, do you know how many we've received? We'll just get the lights a second here. CEO, do you know the number of written submissions we've received today or to date?
Sorry about that, your worship. Trying to get the lights back up. We had three written submissions and one from Modi, so that would make a total of four.
Thank you. Now I would like to invite the public to speak and present comments in the interest of hearing all persons. Within a reasonable timeframe, each person shall have five minutes. Further opportunity will be afforded for persons to speak a second or third time once all persons have had an opportunity to speak. I as chair have the authority to stop any speaker who is not commenting on the facts pertinent to this bylaw. Members of the public who are attending in person who wish to speak, please clearly state your name and address for the record and then proceed with your comments. Are there any comments from the floor tonight? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is John Allen. I live at three-nine-eight Hot Springs Road. Harrison Hot Springs have done for forty-eight years. Couple of comments about procedure if I might to start with. There's a very strange echo here which makes it hard for people in the audience to hear. So I don't think you've solved the audio problems. I could barely understand anything that the last speaker said and I was sitting just here. However, I'll carry on. Under the rules of procedure contained in the community charter and the Local Government Act, you're supposed to give two weeks' notice of a public hearing like this. First I heard of it was less than two weeks ago when I got a flyer in the mail and I approve of mail flyers as a method of communication. The two weeks' notice requires notice in the local newspaper and I've checked the Agassi Harrison Observer and there were no such notices printed in recent editions of that local newspaper. I also, on the morning or the afternoon of the twenty-ninth of October, checked the public notice boards at the village office, at the post office and here at Memorial Hall. There was no notice posted in any of those places of this public hearing. And if there had been, it should have been done at least a week before that date to meet the two-week deadline. So my primary objection is that this particular public hearing is illegal because it does not meet the requirements of the Local Government Act and the community charter in terms of notifying the public and inviting them to comment. A couple of comments I'd like to make about the development itself. I believe that inserting this six-story building in the middle of the village in a four-story zone is an absolute travesty and a breach of trust. Those of us who have invested our money and our lives in this village have relied upon the official community plan and the zoning bylaws in making those investments and commitments. The zoning bylaw should say, if it doesn't at the moment, that the purpose of the official community plan is to provide a degree of certainty to investors and residents as to the future development of the village. In every version of the zoning bylaw and the official community plan up to date, one of the main cornerstone's of land use regulation in the commercial zone is that the village should avoid creating a wall of high towers along the lakefront and should always enforce the four-story height limit. In all of the other developments here in block two, block three, and block four, those people have been required to abide by the community rules that said maximum building height is four stories. As a result of that, you have a fairly uniform roof line along the lakefront and all of those people who built within the bylaws have good cause to be quite upset that suddenly for this developer the rules don't apply. The four-story height limit which has been enforced on others is suddenly relaxed and we're going to six stories. And I think that's a really serious reach of the promises made to myself and the other investors and residents of the village and are contained within the OCP and the zoning bylaw. Nothing that has been presented by the developer has provided any good reason why he should be exempted from the four-story height limitation. I know that the four-story height limitation was breached initially when the Aqua Shores condo was approved at the other end of the Esplanade. The argument at that time was, well, it doesn't really matter because in this location at the end of the street, it's not really affecting the the overall feel of the center part of the village because it's on the periphery. In that case, the only properties that are affected were the properties behind the Aqua Shores, one of them being mine. And again, it wasn't so much a blockbuster thing as being right in the center of the block. Whereas if you approve this six-story building on this small site just two doors down from us here, then what you're saying is that everything else in this block can go to six stories. The next developer comes along and says, you've set the precedent. You've relaxed the bylaw to six stories. I deserve the same privilege. And in that case, you really need to go back and rewrite your official community plan and rewrite your zoning bylaw and say six stories is gonna be permitted. I don't recommend that you do that. I recommend strongly that you stick to the rules that have been in place ever since we started having land use regulation in Harrison, which goes back probably sixty years, maybe further. So I object to the-
Sorry, Mr. Allen, if I could just interrupt. You've spoken for six minutes and I want to make sure everyone has a chance. I'm wondering if you could either conclude your remarks in the next minute and I did give you an extra minute-
Just a second.
Or or the procedure comments you made earlier. But I'd like to give others an opportunity to speak. So if you can finish your comments in a minute, another sixty seconds or if not, then perhaps put a a pin in it and if time permitting at the end, come back to you. Thank you.
Well, as I understand it, Mr. Mayor, that having spoken for five minutes, you could ask me to sit down and I will, but I am allowed to come back for two more of five minutes. Just that's clear. There's another ten minutes available to me.
Yes, or you could finish and I'll give you another minute right now.
No, I'd like to let the other people have a chance to speak. I'll be quite happy to sit and wait to be recalled. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from the floor this evening?
My name is Alan Garno and I live at six-four-one Schooner Place. I find myself in a very conflicting role here tonight. As a member of the APC, I have to say at the outset that my comments here tonight are personal. I don't pretend to represent the thinking or the discussion of anybody on the APC, but I do represent that that my thinking as a person, as a resident of Harrison, I have followed this development keenly. And I have to say that my personal reaction to the proposal was this is imaginative. It offers good amenities. It brings things to a point where what exists now would be replaced with something that is much better. I concede that. However, my overriding thinking is what is best for Harrison. When I look at the limits to which they expect us to amend a bylaw, especially to ninety-five percent of the footprint to the height, I I just find that Harrison in tonight later, you're going to be adopting some design guidelines. I don't know if that will apply in the end to this because this violates a good portion of the design guidelines that you will be adopting tonight. It violates it in many, many ways. Form and character are important. But this facility will set the standard for form and character and not follow it. And that's a concern for me. I think that especially on the pictures that showed the makeup of the facility on the lot and on the street showed just how overwhelming and overbearing this building is going to be because if the design guidelines as they're proposed for tonight don't apply now, but they will in the future, this building will forever be dominant down there. And I think it's just, it's just wrong. I know the developers here have worked hard and as I said, I think it's a good, it's imaginative, but you know, it's, it's like the it's like the dyke that was proposed for along there that has been stalled because it takes too much away from that by wonderful part of Harrison, something that attracts it. So I have to summarize my comments by saying, I'm sorry, folks, this thing is just asking too much, too much of us and we're giving away too much of Harrison to a facility. I cannot in my personal- I cannot, in my personal as a resident, I, I just don't see that it fits. And I don't know that it can be fixed without major, major reconsideration of what it proposes to do. There are so many tests, shade, access. It turns Lilwet into, it just continues the idea that Lilwet is nothing but a back alley for the visits, for the buildings that are there. I think, Mr. Chairman, I'm probably approaching my time if I haven't exceeded it. But I think I've made my position and as I said, I regret it. They put a lot of work into this, but sorry, it's not for Harrison, not the kind of Harrison we want. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Maybe I'll turn to CEO Zoom.
Thank you, Your Worship. I just want to clear up a couple of things and but I'll start by saying I'm no Amanda Graham as our corporate officer, so you'll have to bear with me. Just a couple of comments that were made. I just want to refer to section four of the Community Charter 466. Where are we here? 3.1 that it states that publish by at least one of the means publication specified in the bylaw, not less than three days and not more than 10 days before the public hearing. Just to clear up that confusion. And then also wanted to speak to the alternative methods of publishing notice. Per bylaw number 1200. It is cited as the village, the public notice by law number 1200 2024. Under some section three subsection one, any notice required to be published in accordance with section 94 of the Community Charter must be published by posting electronically on the village's website and distributing advertisements via direct mail to all registered post, post, post box, or sorry, post office boxes in the village of Harrison Hot Springs. Now, if there is no means to get, it says here in number two, in the event that direct mail is not possible due to a mail delivery disruption resulting from a post office closure, Canada Post worker strike or otherwise, public notices will be published by posting electronically on the village website and posting electronically on the village Facebook page. It does not speak to any newspaper ads. Thank you, Your Worship.
Thank you, CEO Cook. Are there any comments this time from anyone on Zoom listening in remotely?
Anyone on Zoom, if you have a question, please raise your hand.
Hearing none, I'll ask if there are further comments from the floor tonight. I see one hand, please.
Hi, I'm your new mayor worship. Welcome you here and my name is Andrew Bazeyuk and we have also a development proposal that is across Lilwet Avenue to the south. And I also live here neighbor at 881 Whole Place. I have mixed feelings about this too, but there are different. Number one, I was told when my development was going on that I should read the zoning bylaw and the overall community plan very carefully. And there was one item in there that said, spoke about sightlines. And if you look at that item in the zoning bylaw, you will read that a sightline is required down the middle of that lot from Lilwet to Esplanade. And it was split into two halves of the building. And my comment is that makes garbage out of our zoning bylaw, which has about this stuff about, and I think we should be buried that actually, that's my own opinion. Because city, city, village is off on that. There should be no such bylaw. Now, that's the first point. Now, the second point is the building is three stories of parcade on Lilwet. We now see what a two-story parcade on Lilwet is with Esplanade. This is going to be three with a more building above that. And how is that inviting to any pedestrian or any activity along Lilwet? And I got to speak for Lilwet Avenue. It's a great avenue. It's very wide. You could land planes on it if you had to. And but the village seems to have forgotten it. There's no beautification, no Christmas lights on it for years. But we as a taxpayer, a little bit further away, we pay for these Christmas lights and all the glitter and everything else. We have overhead power lines which stretch everywhere. We don't try to bury them underground in Lilwet so it'd be pedestrian friendly. We don't have a nice boulevard. Trees are removed. Mr. Allen, I'm sure knows about that. And Lilwet seems to be have forgotten. It seems to be have forgotten even by the village. The village ten, five years ago, did a major redevelopment of this building we stand on. And here, what we did, yes, we renovated it. But look at what we did along Harrison and Lilwet, nothing. There's not even a sidewalk properly in the back. There's no curb in the back. There's no planting in the back of anything. It is missing. Why is it missing? And this, this is a chance right now with this one to say, we care about Lilwet Street. We're going to make it better. And so something from the village is necessary on here to approve that because our front side facing the lake in our project is going to be facing the backside of this parcade and a three-story parcade, I'm sorry. Just not my idea of nice. So that's my comments.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you for listening to me.
Are there any other comments from the floor at this time? Please come forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Rav Guzman, 529 Cottonwood Avenue. I agree with my previous, the three previous speakers. I think they made good points. I think probably the first time in four and a half years, I also agree with John Allen as to where we have zoning bylaws that restrict the height, the lot coverage. And I think we should adhere to those bylaws and not give any variances for anyone who wants. So bylaws call for a four-story building and I think we should adhere to that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Are there other comments on the floor?
Thank you, Your Worship. My name is James Horkel. I live at 245 Miami River Drive, Harrison Hot Springs. I concur with the previous speakers, but also just by my address, I'm directly affected by this. There were some beautiful architectural drawings and my wife had asked me to, that we just seen. My wife had tried to drag me along to this meeting and I said, no, it's not going to affect us. It's just another 10 feet on top of the existing buildings. But when I saw those architectural drawings, I said, wow, this is double the size of anything that's here on the front street. And it will directly affect us. The shadow drawings, the sun cast shadows were shown from the south and from the sunset, I believe. One of the beautiful things, as some of the previous speakers will have told you, is watching what I call the big sundial over the mountains that comes up in the morning as the sun rises from the east and more through the southeast in Harrison Hot Springs. Bear Mountain to your, to the east of the village casts a beautiful sundial up to the west side of the lake that you can just watch. That slowly progresses over top of the condos and the all the buildings here onto Front Street and progresses from here down along Miami River Drive. That will be gone. That's the shadow picture that's missing in that diagram. My brother-in-law, who lives at 233 Miami River Drive, lives directly behind that, due south of where that will be constructed. His view now consists of looking down towards the lake and right up the street. That is very much going to affect him and he has expressed those concerns to my wife. So I'll just keep it at short, in short, I agree with the procedural comments that Mr. Allen and others have agreed. And this very much affects our personal lifestyle or living arrangements or viewpoints, both for myself, my wife and my brother-in-law at 233 Miami River Drive. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll maybe turn once more to Zoom and see if there are any comments on Zoom at this time.
Anyone on Zoom, if you have a question, raise your hand. No questions, Your Worship?
Are there any other comments from the floor at this time? Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jerry Palmer. I live at two, well, my residence is at 260 Eagle Street here in Harrison Hot Springs. I am not affected personally by this proposal. It doesn't affect my view. It doesn't affect anything of that nature. Interestingly, the house that we have here in Harrison was built in the seventies. It has a nice deck on the second floor. And when the house was built in the seventies, you could actually, I understand, see the water. But since that time, there's been a whole row of three, four-story buildings built along houses behind us. And now because of the flood covenant have to build higher, our view, that view of that house disappeared long ago. And that's fine. That's how it works. I didn't, that house has never owned the view. It basically, you know, I own my own backyard. I don't expect other people to keep their property low so I can see. So that's number one. I wanted to also say, when I was on council, I was on council for, for four years, I actually kept track and I voted against more development proposals than I voted in favor of. Although during the time I was characterized as being part of some fictitious gang that supported all developments, but generally I haven't been supportive of most developments. If you look at history though, almost every development in the village is asked for a variance of some sort, as in Chilowack, as in Habsburg. So very seldom is someone built exactly according to what the zoning says. To me, if someone is going to oppose or propose something that is beyond the zoning, there's got to be a reason to do it. For instance, if the proposal before council was for a six-story condominium building, I don't think I'd be supportive of that. I don't think that's appropriate unless someone said it'll be a six-story condominium building and one or two floors will be designated as rentals and for seniors, then it would make sense to accept a variance. I think in the case of this particular proposal, where I would be tempted to view it as an acceptable variance is because two things. One, it's a hotel. Now hotels bring tourism. The existing hotel, main hotel in the village, without being unfair, certainly has brought less high-money tourists into the community for the last several years. And I think that what I can see about this hotel is it will aim for an upper market, which will be, I think, useful for the restaurants and the gift shops and the businesses and those people who get employment by working in the village. So I see, I see that as a, as a plus. The second issue is almost all the other properties in the village along the front have inadequate parking. That's why in the summer, people are parked. The pay parking is full. People park in front of my house. People park all the way down McCombs, which is fine. I'm welcoming the tourists. But the point is, most developments have not tried to accommodate all their parking within a building. A large part of why this is such a massive building is because they're putting in that number of parking spots. I think it's 112, 112, which is more than is actually required. It's probably going to be the only building in the community that actually houses or provides parking for the people using it, which is in my mind, a very positive thing. And that, as I understand, is a large part of the sizing of this building and the massing of this building. So I look at that and I think in this case, the variances that are being required make sense in terms of what it offers the building. Or sorry, offers the village. Another opportunity to bring in tourists. And I would say high-value tourists, people who come in and stay overnight and will go out to restaurants because they, they're not cooking their meals in their RV or some such thing. And not only high-value tourists, but it will not put more stress on the parking. So in fact, it'll probably put less stress on the parking. So that's what I wanted to say. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you for your comments. Are there any other comments from the floor? Mr. Allen, I think you get another chance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm still John Allen, 398 Hot Springs Road. So I was talking about the height limit when I finished my last session. And I still believe that that is a serious issue. Normally in a municipality, a developer, and I was in the real estate business for 30 years and I worked for developers, so I know that they are actually profit motivated and their job is to make the maximum amount of money that they can from their investments. And I appreciate that. But our job as a community is to ensure that whatever they do fits into our community and that, that whatever additional profit they make by rezoning or height variances or density variances is within the limits of our bylaws. So when developers do approach a council and want to build a larger building, a denser building to relax the setbacks, relax the height, relax, relax, they normally offer some incentive to the community and they'll say, we'll give you half a million dollars to build a new park if you'll let us have another 10% density increase. And there's a bit of negotiation that happens. I haven't seen any of that happen throughout this development. All we're doing is giving, 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 giving and giving away density, giving away height and giving and not getting anything to compensate the community as a whole in exchange for that generous variances and zoning bylaw changes. To some extent, this is one of the things that planners should hate and it's called a spot zoning. And a spot zoning is where you take one property in the middle of an established zone with established rules and say, the rules don't apply to this property. We're going to allow this property to go beyond the rules and build something different, something bigger, something whatever. And that is something that's anathema to most planners. You simply don't do it. What you're aiming for is to have a consistent pattern of land use and development where all the buildings have something in common or a common height line or a common setback. And, and they look like they belong together rather than have one incongruous one stuck in the middle three stories higher than everything else. I'm also very concerned about the streetscape. When we in a community like this, and I've been on the APC and council for over 40 years, we act to some extent like mall developers in which we try to create an environment at the street level that people will enjoy. And that means visual interest, it means street trees, street furniture. But it also means that the buildings at street level should have some interest. And normally this is created by, by including retail shop fronts along the street. The new outdoor malls such as at West Vancouver at Royal Centre Mall are effectively a front street designed by a developer with a streetscape that's safe and well-maintained. And that is replacing traditional downtown street shopping very effectively. In Harrison, we should be doing the same. This building and any building on the Esplanade and on the Lilwet should have shop fronts at pavement level. Retail space, cafes, ice cream stores, retail shops, all of that type of thing. On this particular building, we have on the Esplanade side facing the lake, nothing but a blank wall and a small entrance at one end for a lobby into a hotel. On the Lilwet side, on the south side of the building across from the Glenco, again, we have not even a blank wall. We appear to have an open wall view of the interior parking. We appear to have an open wall, uh, view of the interior parking lot. And if you look at our OCP, it says we should avoid turning Lilwet Avenue into a back alley. It has the potential and can become a viable retail street if we treat it correctly. We've already had this experience, if you look at the Aqua Shores, the other end of Lilwet Avenue, again, a blank wall with a parking entrance and that's what you're going to have and that is not good in the long term for the viability of Harrison Hot Springs as a destination resort. When I'm talking about Lilwet Avenue, I want to point out to council that you have been reminded several times by the Ministry of Highways or Ministry of Transportation, highways, infrastructure, as they're now called, that the provincial highway, uh, has a rule that says that any building along Lilwet Avenue to the east side of the traffic lights must have a setback of any building of four point five meters and that's about fifteen feet. So even though the province has told you repeatedly that you cannot build within that fifteen-foot setback, you and your staff have continued to present this plan which we saw on the screen tonight, which ignores the provincial regulation. And I don't see how that's possibly going to work. Because the province also requires any building that has a driveway access onto the highway to get a highway access permit. And all they have to do is say, no highway access permit if you don't put your building back by fifteen feet.
Mr. Allen, I'd just like to interrupt you there, um, uh, that's been another, uh, five minutes, uh, speaking. And I wonder if there is anyone else from the floor who would like to speak at this time? Or, uh, Mr. Allen, if there is none, then I'll, I'll let you continue for another five minutes. Is there anyone?
So should I go and sit down?
I'm just looking to see if there's anyone else from the floor who wants to speak at this time. I don't mean to make you get up and down unnecessarily. CEO?
Yeah, thank you, your worship. I just wanted to clarify again, couple of, couple of comments that Mr. Allen said there that he, I think he was speaking to the community amenity contribution, which is no longer in effect, um, it would be called the amenity cost, uh, uh, charge, which is a new tool for developers to establish, which we have not established to date. So those options, uh, are unavailable at this time, uh, just let everybody know that.
Thank you, uh, CEO Cook. Is there anyone else from the floor who wants to speak at this time? Uh, yes, I see a hand.
Four and a half meters. Here, with the four and a half meters wanted, desired by, um, the Department of Highways, they have informed us of that too and they have informed us after we applied for the development permit. Nobody applied for the develop, nobody told us when we, our own project was going because we could not talk, Mr. Cossey, because it was not an accepted project. And therefore, we had no input and maybe I, I'm looking at it now legally at that point issue and, uh, but basically it is a big issue. And that issue is for the village to decide, do they want to have the province dictate Harrison's setbacks? Or are Harrison's setbacks even real? The zero, uh, C four that is required is not acceptable, obviously. And that is really wrong, gives wrong impression to developers, to builders, to anything else and gives the village a bad name.
Thank you.
Okay, bye-bye.
Uh, CEO Cook?
Yes, thank you, your worship. I believe that, uh, uh, Mr. Cossey has his hand up, I think he wants to respond to that.
Uh, Mr. Cossey?
Thank you, your worship, or your, Mr. Chairman. The four-point-five meter issue has been part of the package for a long, long time. And you'll notice on the bylaw itself, there's a requirement for the Ministry of Transportation and Infrastructure approval provided on whatever date it is. That's a requirement when they're looking at a numbered highway. Whether or not the developers themselves are aware of that provincial legislation, that's not for us to say. That's for their own requirement for them, themselves to do their own research. And as well, the Ministry of Transportation can apply or if you apply, they can grant a variance, but that's up to the Ministry of Transportation and Infrastructure. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cossey. Uh, mister, um, I see one hand up, I wonder if I could have that speaker proceed before you, Mr. Allen. Thank you.
Maureen Went and I live on Miami River Drive, uh, four oh one. Um, I only really have one thing that I'd like to mention. Um, I don't think anybody has, has mentioned that the hotel, I think, has the, uh, that, that is the resort, is not the resort that it used to be. It has lots of accommodation, but it hasn't kept up the times. We need another hotel. And I congratulate these people for trying to give us another hotel. Please consider the zoning and whatever else you have to consider, but we need a hotel. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Mr. Allen, please proceed.
John Allen, three nine eight Hot Springs Road. I guess in response to the argument from Mr. Cossey, I'd just like to quote from the memo that was in the package for tonight. And it's from Samantha Lewis who says, please ensure that the landowner developers are aware that we require a four-point-five-meter setback from the property line adjacent to Lilwet Avenue. It couldn't be much clearer than that. Lilwet Avenue is highway number nine, it is a numbered highway. And by this memo, which was written, I think, on the eleventh, you've been told very clearly that there is a setback required. The ministry expects municipalities to know what the provincial rules are and to apply those and support the ministry in, in enforcing those rules. It horrifies me to think that the staff has put this before council when it is in fact an illegal plan because it contravenes a provincial regulation and in the hierarchy of government.
I'm gonna need to interrupt you, Mr. Allen, could you speak to the zoning bylaw and the proposal that we're considering? Um, I've noted your procedural concerns, but this public hearing's purpose is to hear comments specific to the, the application.
Yes, my comment is directly on point, Mr. Mayor. The proposed development and the zoning bylaw which, which enables it contravenes provincial regulation and the province is always superior to the municipality when it comes to the enforcement of regulation. So this development shouldn't be before you in this form unless that four-point-five-meter setback is included in the plans. I would also point out that we have numerous plans about public transportation and, and walkability of Harrison, which say that we should have, uh, I think on the backside of this property in Lilwet, a sidewalk at least ten feet wide. The plans that have been presented to council and to the public here tonight uh, provide no such sidewalk, no such landscaping and no real plan to do anything there except maybe leave a gravel boulevard for some kind of parking. And I think that's a serious mistake. I know that we have some design guidelines and aesthetic considerations which should apply here and of all places that should apply on the back of this building, we would need to see something more attractive than what has been proposed. So generally speaking, Mr. Mayor, I think that this needs serious revision. I have a secondary concern in that having reviewed the plans, I'm concerned that this would start out as a hotel and, uh, we'd be told that the, you, the rooms are gonna be stratified for investment purposes. And then, when it's finished, it becomes a residential condo. And this happened next door at the Cascade Bay Building, which got a permit for a hotel and it never did operate as a hotel. So if we're going to countenance that happening here, I would urge council to put some safeguards in place to ensure that if this is approved as a hotel, which is a lower construction standard than residential use, that that actually happens and those teeth need to go into the development, uh, approval at an early stage. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Oh, uh, CEO Cook?
Thank you, your worship. I seem to be stepping in here quite a bit tonight, but, uh, just a point of clarification. Uh, there is a second email in the package, uh, from the Ministry of Transportation to the developer, uh, addressing the four-point-five-meter setback. They initially had asked for a zero-meter setback. Um, and they were advised that it is a four-point-five-meter setback and I do believe that they have been granted a two-point, or sorry, a two-meter, uh, setback.
Thank you. Are there any other comments, uh, on the floor? Uh, I see one hand, please.
Thank you, your worship, your councillors, my name is Freddie Marks. I, together with my daughter Linda, are part of the REMEX office in, uh, Agassiz. And I'd like to address that council, please focus on the main need for Harrison Hot Springs. This development, design and everything is always discussable and I'm pretty sure when the permit procedure starts, the design will be changed several times. But I agree with the lady who was here before me. Harrison Hot Springs is in need for more hotel rooms, for modern hotel rooms. Beside the beach hotel, what has just finished a major renovations, we are out of adequate good hotel rooms. All of PC is out of hotel rooms. If you follow the press, you know that British Columbia is thirty to forty-five percent behind their requirements. Here's an investment group, what is a local investment group, who started small several years ago with a restaurant, built, bought another restaurant, invested, put their mouse, put their money where their mouths is, have a big commitment to this village, invest, uh, employ local people, pay them well. Real investors, not investors who just say they are investors in the village and they have not invested in forty years here. So I like to bring my, the focus to the hotel development. If you wrote down that rezoning and we miss the hotel development, I think we will all pay the price, be, uh, we are a tourism destination. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, are there any questions, uh, on Zoom at this time? Comments? Hearing none, uh, comments from the floor? I'll ask for a second time if there are any further comments from the floor. I, I think, Mr. Allen, you, uh, I've, I've given you three opportunities to speak. Um, I believe that, that is the allotted amount for, uh, uh, members, uh, to speak at this forum. Are there any other comments from the floor? So for a second time, is there anyone else attending in person who would like to provide a comment or submission to council regarding zoning amendment by law number one two zero nine twenty twenty-four? And for a second time, are there any comments or questions, uh, from those participating on Zoom? For a third and final time, if there's anyone else attending in person who would like to provide a comment or submission to council regarding zoning amendment by law number one two zero nine twenty twenty-four? And for the third and final time, are any comments or questions from Zoom? Hearing none, the public hearing for zoning amendment by law number one two zero nine twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-four is hereby closed. Thank you all for your attention and your participation tonight.